Good evening, welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting for December 14th. Before we call the meeting to order this evening, we have one citizen comment on our agenda. Is Nicholas Howell here? Nicholas Howell? Then we don't have an item on our citizen comments, so we'll call this meeting to order. The first thing we're going to do this evening is say a prayer and a pledge. I'm going to ask Councilman Steve Sullivan to do our prayer for us, and Mike Moss, our Parks Director, will be doing our pledge, if you'll stand with us, please.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight grateful for the town that we have. We ask that you continue to bless our council, bless our community, bless the leaders in our state and the leaders in our country, Lord. We are grateful for the provisions that you've given us, and we recognize that all the provisions we have are because of your grace and mercy. Be with these proceedings, that everything that would happen here would be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Place the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve and Mike. Diane, do you want to do roll call for us, please?
Councilman Howell?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morrell?
Here.
Councilwoman North?
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Reed.
All right, and the next thing on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from the November 14th and November 30th meetings. Council, we look those over. Council up here, has everybody had a chance to look them over? Are there any changes we need to make? If none, we'll take a motion.
A move we approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Awards and recognitions. Mr. Pete, are you handling that by chance tonight?
I will, but I've not been advised of any.
Okay, so we have none. We'll move on to our consent agenda. This is a...
Number four.
Wait a minute.
This is with Ladonna.
Oh, I'm sorry. I scrolled you off, Ladonna. Uh, Ladonna. Correspondence Communications, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I scrolled you above my screen.
Thank you all for having me. I apologize, I've just about lost my voice, so you're in luck. You don't have to listen too much. I just wanted to take an opportunity to say, on behalf of Nurish Food Bank, how grateful we are to the town of Smyrna for all the support that you've given to us and to our families. We went to the wonderful Christmas parade that we just had and benefited from that. Over 7,000 items came in from food drives through that to support local families, and, you know, Smyrna continues to be our home as we've expanded our services and deepened what we offer families to try and help them move towards sustainability. We've really been looking at how we nourish our families and our community as a whole, and that's been part of that change that's driven us from Smyrna Laverne Food Bank to Nurish Food Bank, but it's in recognition of how we're serving our local families. But it doesn't change that Smyrna is our home, and the way that you all have supported us and graced us with those gifts is truly remarkable, and we just wanted to have an opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all that you guys do. We have some people up here that are very involved with your food bank, and I know I've paid a visit or two over there with you as well during the seasons. You know, the food bank is something that's needed all year round, and it's not just this time of the year, but the food bank gets a lot of attention this time of year. I think Lori was telling us last time we met, how much there's a need for personal hygiene product and things like that, so do you want to touch on that real quick?
Yes, so beyond traditional food items that you would think of going on in a food bank, we offer formula and diapers and baby cereal and things to care for families who have infants and small children, personal hygiene items which are especially critical for our homeless families, those living in their cars, those living in pay-by-the-week hotel kind of facilities. We even help support programs in the area that go out to the tent cities and take those to the homeless, and being able to partner and give those personal hygiene items. We provide pet food whenever available. Many of our families, especially our senior citizens, tend to choose their pet over themselves when it comes to providing food or providing medicine for themselves because that's, you know, all they have, and so being able to offer those things to offset those costs really makes a difference for them. Ensure diabetic items, those kinds of things. We try and have can openers and little pop-up grills whenever available for our homeless families, so whatever it looks like to the family in need, that's what we try and offer.
And while you're there at the microphone, I know you're struggling with your voice, but if you would mind, no, I'm just, as a favor to the public that's watching, if you would give your contact or your address information in case people have something they want to drop off to the food bank?
Absolutely. We are at two offices, so whatever works best for where folks are working or coming from. We have 130 Richardson Street in Smyrna and 211 Bridge Avenue in Murfreesboro. Our Smyrna site is also open on every other Saturday, but the main service hours are going on from 10 to 2 every day, but we've always got someone there before and after to help with drop-offs. And I appreciate you bringing up folks getting involved, not just in terms of food drives or donating that way, but volunteerism is such a huge part of what we do. You know, we have a staff of five covering two offices, so obviously most of what we do is with the help of volunteers in this incredible community, and we always love to see that support.
How long have you been there now? It's been several years, has it not?
Four years.
Four years, okay. I know you've been there a little while. Thank you for all that you do for the community, we really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
While we're on the topic, I've got a couple people, if it's okay with you, I'd like to say thank you to, because of the last food drive we just completed.
Oh, wonderful.
The fire department was coordinated by Lieutenant Bert Wilson.
Yes.
I'm sure you know Bert Wilson pretty well by now.
Yes.
So we want to say thank you to him. They collected 20,900 items for Nurish Food Bank.
And they also came and helped give out turkeys and holiday meals to our families. They're really incredible, and then came in and helped sort all of that food into our sheds and get that going. They really go above and beyond for us.
And Chief Culberson, I know is a driving force with the fire department behind a lot of that. The Christmas parade food drive was through the efforts of several individuals as well. We'd like to announce who they are and how they helped. Jill Strange, I know Mike's here, Jill's, Mike's wife Jill, has helped coordinate our parades and this food drive for several years now, does an amazing job, so we want to thank Jill for all her hard work. Mayor Reed, of course, was very involved in that. She's away on vacation, by the way, and that's why she's not here this evening. Mr. Gill and the parade participants, town of Smyrna staff and town of Smyrna citizens, we have had a lot of support from all these folks for the food drive, we greatly do appreciate it. There was a total of 7,181 items collected at the Christmas parade this year, far surpassing the goal of 5,000. Last year they collected 4,523 items, with an increase this year of 2,658 items. So that's amazing that each year it's growing. The word's getting out, there's more awareness made about it. Jill and some of the others that are heading that up from the parade standpoint are doing a phenomenal job, so thank you.
Thank you, it really is, and I will leave you alone, but you bring one thing for me. When we had our ribbon cutting, changing the name to Nurish Food Bank, we had somebody who showed up on our doorstep about 45 minutes before we were set to open, and, I mean, of course, we were in the process of opening the doors, and she passed out on our doorstep from hunger. You were there that day, which is never something you want to see, and it was humbling and everybody was in tears, but what it brought home for us is that we live in such an incredible blessed community that there's no reason why anybody's neighbor should be going so hungry that by the time they make it to a food bank, that they're passing out from hunger. And so what you said about that word, getting out, is so important for us, just if you know anybody who has any of those needs, you know, we're here, our doors are open, you know, let us help.
It's an awesome blessing to have you guys in our community, just to let you know.
Thank you.
We were at the town and Smyrna employee luncheon, and we had somebody approach us, an employee of the town, I won't mention their names, but told us that they see things like this in our community, this time of year especially, with people who can't pay their heat bills and things of that nature. So we've got some really, really good-hearted people that not only work for the, for you guys, but also our employees, that really have a heart for the community, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you all so much for having me, for what you do.
Thanks so much. And I'm sorry I skipped you.
No.
All right, now we'll, we did not have awards and recognitions, we'll skip on to the consent agenda. These are just items that we've gone over in the workshop, I'll read them individually, then we'll take a motion at the end, and if any of our council has an item they wish to pull out and talk about separately, we'll do that. So the first one is A, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with LifePoint Church relative to the Smyrna Parks and Recreation practice field. B, approval of authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Tennessee Rehab Center relative to Smyrna Parks and Recreation use of field area. C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Science Center relative to the Turtle Travels exhibit in the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. D, approval of the terms and authorization for the mayor to execute documents with the excess carriers relative to the town's self-insured program. E, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Cigna for third-party administrator, provider network, and reinsurance stop-loss for the town's health insurance plan. And F, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Griggs and Maloney, Inc., relative to Phase One environmental evaluation. Are there any items we need to discuss further, and if not, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Now we'll move on to old business. We have several public hearings taking place tonight, so Kevin?
Yes, we have quite a few tonight. The first item is regarding the plan of services for the property located on tax map 51 parcel 33.01. This is a piece of property that has been requested to be annexed into the, to the town of Smyrna. It's about 59.4 acres. The plan of services, relatively standard document, the town will be providing all services to this annexed area. It does lie within our water service boundary, and the planning commission did recommend approval unanimously.
All right, because this is a public hearing, we will go to the public to see if anybody wishes to speak for or against this, and if so, we'll ask you to come up front to the microphone. All right, and seeing none, we will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Kevin?
And the next item is the actual annexation and zoning request that accompanies the plan of services against tax map 51 parcel 33.01, it's about 59.4 acres. Zoning upon annexation would be PRD. This property is west of Cook's Lane, it doesn't, it is not adjoining a public street in Smyrna, but it does join a piece of property with common ownership that's also a part of the next request for rezoning that's on your agenda. Land use plan would support low-density residential development in this area, surrounding zoning is RM in the county and R1 in town. Town would be providing all services, as I said, to this area upon annexation. The proposed PRD, which would be this, the parcel that's on the screen there, kind of in the green and blue stripe, and then the adjoining parcel that's just in the green, it's already in the community, all would be zoned the same, but eventually, if you approve it. But PRD for the entire two parcels together is for a 15-lot, single-family residential subdivision utilizing a step system. The material roadway would be private, would be built with a ditch cross-section and with the nine-foot lanes and two-foot shoulders instead of a typical curb street. Homes would be 3,400 square feet minimum, be 85% brick, stone, or cement siding on all sides. The planning commission did recommend approval of the annexation as well as the zoning that went along with that, with a few conditions that you can see there in your summary, and I guess that's all I've got.
Thank you, Kevin. So this is two, a public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak for or against, this would be your time to come forward and do that. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion we approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Kevin?
Yeah, the next item is just the resolution that you have to pass on annexations now to comply with state law, to basically, that you, it's just in memorandum of the ordinance that you just passed, so, for annexation. It does not require public hearing.
Okay. So we need to go ahead and pass that as well?
Yes.
Motion we approve.
Right? Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D?
Yeah, this is the rezoning request that accompanied the annexation request. This is the, it's a piece of property at tax map 51 parcel 1.02, currently zoned R1. It would be changed to the PRD. It's about 35.08 acres, it's located on Cook's Lane. Again, the land use plan would support low-density residential here, and again, the PRD is, is just as I described on the previous request there, and again, the planning commission did recommend approval with a few conditions to go along with the plat and the road and that sort of thing.
And again, this is one of our many public hearings tonight, so if there's anybody in the public that wishes to come forward and speak for or against, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
Have a motion, and we need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going to keep you up here for a little while, Kevin.
Yeah.
Okay, item E. This is a consideration resolution relative to a plan of service for property located tax map 51, part of parcel nine and 901.
Yeah, this is, again, for a couple of tracts of land that are adjoining, some land that's already within the city, but it's all looked at one development plan, but we've got to look at annexation and the rezoning separately. So this is for the annexation of tax map 51, part of parcel nine, and all of parcel 9.01. It's about 33.2 acres total, located south of Lee Road. Again, the plan of services would, puts in writing all the services that the town would provide upon annexation. This does lie within CUD's service boundary for water, but other than that, it is all town services, and the planning commission did recommend approval.
All right, being a public hearing, once again, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody in the audience wishes to speak for or against, come forward. This is for the plan of services annexation. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Item F, consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of properties located on tax map 51, part of parcel nine, containing approximately 7.9 acres, and parcel 901, containing approximately 25.3 acres, requested by RHB LLC, zoning would be a PRD. Property is located south on Lee Road, and this is a second reading.
This is the annexation and zoning request that accompanies the plan of services. These are part of one parcel and all of another one. It does join the, some parcels that are part of the next request for rezoning, it's the next item on your agenda. Land use plan would support a low-density residential development in this area, surrounding zoning is RM in the county and PRD in town. Again, we will be providing all services except water, which will be provided by CUD. The proposed PRD is for a 432-lot, single-family subdivision, and homes would be 2,300 square feet minimum, constructed to brick or stone. The planning commission did recommend approval, with the condition that basically the traffic study be done, and so that still be, is forthcoming still, and they did recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Kevin. This is two, is a public hearing, so we will go to the, we will go to the public for any comments for or against. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
You have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, you want to talk on item G there as well?
Yeah, this is, again, just the resolution that you have to pass to be compliant with state law regarding the annexations.
And we do need to pass this as well from a motion, so...
Yes.
Do we have a motion from the council?
A move we approve.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, another one. Item H, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on tax map 51, part of parcel nine and parcel 28, containing approximately 180.7 acres, requested by RHB LLC to amend the existing approved PRD. Properties are located on Rocky Fork, and this is a second reading.
Yeah, this is the rezoning request for the parcels that are, again, on the map are highlighted there in the solid green. They are, currently zoned PRD, had been annexed and zoned several years ago, approximately about 10 years ago, for a similar type development, a single-family development. This would increase that from 355 lots to 432, and then include the additional property that you just annexed as part of it. Most of the original conditions of the PRD, which were approved at the time, 10 years ago, would remain. The revisions, again, are really just to add to the total number of lots. They did change a lot mix somewhat as far as lot sizes, and then they did add the additional 33.2 acres, took out some land that was part of the original approval. Did include all that with your, in your packet. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval with the provision that a traffic study be completed for the project.
We are seeing that just about on everything we do out there now, traffic study requests. All right, this is two, a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing for anybody that wishes to speak for or against this. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
So moved.
All right, have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Item I, consideration of a resolution relative to the plan of services for the property located on tax map 54, parcels 50 and 50.01.
This is a plan of services for the annexation and R3 zoning, that's the next item on your agenda. Again, very similar to the previous ones you've looked at, the town would be providing all services except for water here as well, as would be provided by Consolidated Utility District, and the planning commission did recommend approval unanimously.
And bear with us, again, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak for or against this, it looks like we have a couple, so I'll ask the lady, please, to come to the podium, and we'll let you go first. You have a few minutes to express your for or against, and if you would, we need your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. My name is Laura Waddy. I live at 4412 Morton Lane. That would be the property that comes at the angle on Morton Lane, that adjoins the PRD zone currently placed there. Our roads in that area have not been developed enough to handle the increase in traffic. When the county came through two years ago and elevated the roads to improve them for the high school and the other schools in that area, they increased our drainage problems into our property, which has caused water in our basement, and if the new developments would go in, they will have to widen that road to handle the traffic, and the only way to go is over into our property. And I would respectfully request that you would deny the rezoning request.
Thank you, we appreciate those comments.
Thank you.
Was there another? Before, I thought I had somebody in the back. Did I have somebody in the back? Okay, you were, you were next, I think. Yeah, you were, you were second, so. We need your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Doss Studenberg, 7841 Rocky Fork, Gollumville Road. I came here in relation to another property, but this is involved with this one, as you saw, there are many connections going on here, and so I'm absolutely concerned with that. I'm not quite too sure, I know this property where R3 is, that's why I'm here to speak, but I believe utilities are going to have to be brought over, and there's a big hill that's around that area, so I understand that there's going to be some, I guess, it requires quite a big utility to bring up, a lot of investment in the city for that, so I'm opposed to this property, it's going to be coming up right up here, so I'm opposed to any type of rezoning for this particular property in relation to that. I just think that this is pretty much a connector property. I think that, you know, this, this road's very critical to getting over to the school and traffic. I'm concerned with traffic issues primarily, particularly with a lot of development. In fact, trying to get over here is a lot of traffic as well, so...
Welcome to Rutherford County, right?
Exactly, yes. So anyway, that's my thoughts on that, I just respect to request that, that zoning request not go through. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Kenneth Shepherd, I'm at 8155 Rocky Fork. It's just, my house is the next one that you can't see right there in that picture. I'm kind of concerned about the way this is all coming about. Mr. Collins asked for property across the street, which we're going to get to those, I think, tonight. Those were going to be an R3 when y'all approved it several months back, at the same time Cedar Hill was going in, which is the PRD right behind these. Any of you that, and Mark tells me that he's been out there, excuse me, Mr. Atkins tells me he's been out several times and looked. Any of y'all that haven't been out to see what they're doing with the PRD, they took a piece of property, and it was somewhat of a cedar glade and a rock pile, but they pulled up every living stick, every living tree, off of about 75% of that 110 acres at Cedar Hill. Mr. Collins has asked for an R3 and has an R3 on the property across from it, and he's asked for an R3 on these two properties, but at the same time tonight, he's asking to change his R3 across the street to a PRD, which is going to allow even more homes, tighter conflict, and just like the other people have mentioned, we've got erosion problems, there are drainage problems that's going to happen. There, it's unbelievable what y'all are allowing to happen. Lee Road, Cook's Lane, the Rocky Fork, Attila Farms, every bit of this is just going to just blow these schools already out of proportion. There's a new school sitting there that already is making plans, from what I understand, to put in temporary classrooms. Three more schools going out of Amville Road, and 840, from what I understand, they're looking about putting a three-school complex. And I hate to say it, and I don't mean to criticize any of you, but it sounds like it's a rubber stamp tonight. Make the motion, passed. Make the motion, passed. And give us some slack out here. I mean, you just really need to think about what y'all are doing to this community. That's all I can ask.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. Just, just so, for understanding purposes, I want to make sure people understand what a PRD and R3 differences are. PRDs actually offer more control over the product than a standard R3 zone does, so that helps in some ways, in other ways it may hurt because of density. I know the PRD you mentioned, Mr. Shepherd, up above you there, that was, that was approved some time ago. What we're seeing now is that Amville corridor begin to really come to fruition because of the growth corridor that it is, and I know Tim can speak to this a little bit too from a planning perspective. We don't, I don't take your comment negatively, but we don't rubber stamp anything. Where we're at right now are in second readings and so forth, so this is more due diligence on our part to finish something that's already been started through planning commission and other council meetings, so I don't want to take that away as it's, it's a rubber stamp taking place up here, so you'll know. I know that you've approached me about even potentially selling your property at some point out there, so here's my point. These landowners out here have just as much a right to sell their property as you may want to at some point for the best and highest use that they can get out of it. That said, it's incumbent upon us to do the very best we can to make sure that the quality of what they're wanting to do is policed, and a lot of that is through PRD zoning, just to give you a clarification. So just so the public understands the reverse side of your comment there, I want them to know that. And yes, I, I understand that growth is coming. It's, it's happening quite tremendously. We can't lock the door on these people either because they help, they help with a lot of things. But I just want to make sure that the public understands what zonings mean and how the process has been taking place. I know you've been in these meetings, and we've heard you say the same things a couple of times, and I appreciate everybody's comments. I want you to know that. They're very well accepted, and we appreciate them. We have a big challenge on our hands, and some of this has to do with the, the way, the way that we've been dealt the cards, we've been dealt as a municipality, dealing with the county annexation laws now. It's creating some real challenges and issues, even for us. And what I mean by that is that we cannot go out and take this land in any longer. We don't have, the council does not have an authority to go out into the county and begin to spread our annexation out. That was stopped some years ago. So what's happened is the landowners, you and others, that want to sell their property for the highest and best yield use are coming into the town asking to be annexed because they need that infrastructure. They need that sewer, they need those lines to get the density to value their land higher. Does that make sense? So we're seeing a reverse osmosis of annexation taking place. It's not the best planning method, but it's the cards that we were dealt with, the plan with. So now we're getting into, and you spoke about your road, and I hear you. Now what we're getting into is problems with county roads where city land is be, asking to be annexed in to the county. And this is why, just to answer your question, this is why we're asking just about every developer to have traffic studies done. These are neutral sources. These aren't the developers doing their own traffic studies. So I hope that helps you get some clarification. These people have to be licensed in what they do. These engineers have to be licensed in what they do to do traffic studies. So it's not a rubber stamp either. I just want to clarify that so that, you know, we don't get hung up on one thing here. So I appreciate your comments, though, and didn't mean to go into a long dissertation, but I think it's worth the value of the public knowing what's, what that's about. Any other comments, Tim, or anybody?
I want to add a comment, too, just so that you know that, because there, there are in the county limits some developments going on, too, that I'm sure that you've seen out in that area. And at least if they are coming into the town requesting annexation, at least there is more governance over what can be built and how it can be built as to where the county's limits are, you know, less restrictive. So I did just want to, because I do listen to what you have to say, too, and we, we were in the county limits and were forced annexed in the mid-nineties, back prior to the law that Mark was talking about. And so I do, I do hear what you're saying, but middle Tennessee, especially Rutherford County, as we all know, is just a growing, growing leaps and bounds.
It's a great comment, too. It adds to some of the things I just finished, so thank you for that.
Let me, let me add one thing, because I know it was, you just, lady, asked the question or had the concern about drainage. And, you know, a lot of the way things are today, when you're looking at a piece of property, there's really no plan for drainage or discharge or movement of water. So when you're getting the big rains in and things, you're going to see some flooding. What we require from a town's perspective is to make sure that, at a minimum, no additional water is discharged from a property, and oftentimes you'll see, will actually require, you know, a retention plan so that we curb that. And that's part of what, again, you're seeing in, in today's world. So even though you're, you're looking at and you're seeing trees and, and landscape change, it's changing, but, you know, it's reviewed by our towns engineer with the sole intent to make sure that we're not moving any additional water. And oftentimes what we're doing is asking to retain more water there to address those issues. And when, when we say traffic study, it doesn't mean that someone just presents something to us and we look at it and say, okay, thanks. It's also an implementation of that to make sure traffic flows, and it flows in a more orderly fashion.
Thank you, Tim.
One other thing, Mark, to talk about is, in, in the idea of looking at it as a rubber stamp, and I can see why somebody's sitting there to not.
Yeah, it does, it does appear that way, and it's a fair comment, yeah.
But I assure you that in workshop and, and previous council meetings, these items have been.
Planning commission.
Thoroughly discussed. The planning commission also, yeah. I mean, they are very, you know, thoroughly discussed. And, and I think that in reference to this one, last month, one of the things that we came up with was asking our staff and future developments to take a look at lot sizes, building materials, and so on, so that the product that, that we are allowing to be built, if you will, does meet a certain standard. Not that this doesn't, because I believe this is a, this is a very nice development here, and, and it is, is in a like way with the ones that are surrounding it. But, you know, in the future, you know, we want to make the product which Smyrna presents the best that it can be. And that's not going by this council, not going by the planning commission, and, and I think that those things are being addressed.
Thanks, HG. Steve, did you have something?
Nope.
Okay.
Y'all all covered it.
All right, good.
HD threw in the last part.
I guess our point is, it's a public hearing, and we felt like we needed to explain by some of your comments what the process is, a little bit in more detail. The stormwater runoff is always a major concern for everybody, and I think Tim hopefully addressed that for you. I hope they have. And that's always looked at. They cannot discharge additional water onto you. The engineers take a look at that, so.
Actually, that, that does bring up a point. I think the young lady that spoke mentioned that the county came through and raised those roads. And that, that actually is a good argument for annexation. They could do that again. They could come in and do something differently, and if this area around us isn't annexed, then we have no control over helping with runoff or helping with sewer. I drive that road every day over to Franklin where I work, and a year and a half or so ago when that road was paved, you probably remember, it was, there was a section that was paved, and then there was a section that wasn't, and then there was another section that was paved, and it was where the city and the county overlapped. As a result, the road was pretty miserable to drive for about six or eight months because you went from fresh pavement to really bad pavement, back and forth. Eventually, this whole corridor will most likely be annexed. It's in our urban growth plan, and it will probably be annexed. At that time, that road becomes our problem. The town will then manage it completely. So when you do have road improvements, it's managed in conjunction with the annexation and the, and the PRDs that the town already has in place or has already approved, where the county just, they just manage the road. They're not concerned about the neighborhood or the parking lot or the PRD that may be going in that the county, that the town is annexed. So annexation actually should help your, your concerns.
All right, thank you for those comments, and we appreciate it, Ken, all of y'all's. We, we do appreciate them. We are still in the public hearing part of this discussion. If there are any others that wish to speak for or against, we'll invite you up. All right, seeing no others, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion on this.
I'll move we approve.
All right, we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Me, one.
Have one opposition, all right. All right, moving on to item number J, letter J. Consideration ordinance relative to the annexation of properties located on tax map fifty-four, parcels fifty and fifty point oh one, containing approximately thirteen point one acres requested by Sean Collins. Zoning would be R3. Properties are located east of Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road, and adjacent to Morton Lane. This is a second reading. Kevin?
This is the annexation and zoning request that accompanies the plan of services that you just voted on. Again, it's approximately thirteen point one acres. It's in two separate parcels. The land use plan would support a medium-density residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is the Cedar Hills PRD and R3 in town, and RM in Rutherford County. Again, it does lie within CUD service boundaries, but we will be providing all other services. This does have a concern from CUD regarding water services, but they are working with the adjoining developer of Cedar Hills to correct that issue. And so when that is done, this would not be an issue any longer here as either. The applicant is aware of that and is, does wish to proceed with the annexation, as that issue exists regardless of it's in the city or not. The planning commission did recommend approval, five four zero, against.
All right, thank you, Kevin. This also being a public hearing, we will ask the public if there's anybody here to speak for or against. If you have any comments, come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. What property are we talking about? I, I.
It's the same parcel.
It's the same prospect, I think.
All right, seeing no others, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion that we approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
I have a question about the upgrade that they're going to be required to have for the C, for CUD.
CUD had to do that on Cedar Hills, too, did they not?
It's actually, really is with the developers, Cedar Hills, but this falls within that same area, so they have a concern about development. And it's not a concern about what they have there now. It's just a concern if it develops. It's primarily adequate pressure for, for fire hydrants is their main concern. And so they have, there is an agreement signed with the developer of Cedar Hills between them and CUD to, to, to perform that upgrade. Once that is done, it would take care of the issue with this property as well.
Okay, so that will be done before any development?
Yes.
Would have to be.
Would have to be.
And the, as I recall, too, Kevin, to help Raquel get a better grasp of the utility issue here, did they not have to come off of Rocky Fork Road with this, and, and Amberton had to come off of Ammerville? So didn't this kind of end in the, in the middle?
They're, they're kind of, yeah, they're in two service areas for CUD, yes, so.
And that's what created the problem with Cedar Hills. I think it was a pressure problem in the beginning, yeah. Any other questions? All right, so we did have a motion and a second, as I recall, right? So any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, one opposition. You want to speak to the consideration of annexation?
This is just the next item. Since you have approved that ordinance, we do need to approve a resolution and memorandum of that ordinance to comply with state law.
All right. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is just the annexation?
Just for the annexation and zoning, yes, yes.
Any others? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Same.
All right, one opposition. All right, L, we're getting there. Consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on tax map fifty-four, parcels forty-seven and sixty-two, containing approximately one point nine, oh nine, a hundred and nine and a half acres, requested by Sean Collins from R3 to PRD. Properties are located at eighty-three nineteen and eighty-five seventy-five Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road. This is a second reading.
This is across the street from the annexation request you just looked at. Is in, already within the town limits, zoned R3. It's two separate tracts of land totaling a hundred and nine point five acres. Land use plan would support a low-density residential development. Surrounding zoning is a mix of RM in Rutherford County and then the Cedar Hills PRD, as well as the R3 zoning that you just looked at. The proposed PRD was originally for a two hundred and seventy-two lot, single-family development. In the, in the time since you all looked at this on first reading, they have amended the request. Is now, basically it's lowered it from two seventy-two to two sixty-two. They have also changed, or increased the minimum side yard setbacks from five.
Seven foot.
Five to seven feet. Increased the minimum lot width and minimum lot area. They've added some on-street and amenity site parking within the development, about, of about fifty spaces, kind of scattered throughout the community. And they also have committed to increase the minimum front yard setbacks, which the standard is twenty-five, what they've proposed, they've committed to increase that to thirty on seventy-five percent of the lots. So those are some changes from what you looked at on first reading. The other things that did not change with regards to the type of the house they're looking at is very similar in size and style to what was approved as part of Amberton and Cedar Hills. We did include in your packet the revised layout, showing those, those changes that we, they had detailed in their letter as well. So I think that's all that I've got.
All right, thank you. Just to make a comment on this, too, before we open the public hearing. The, this is a direct adjustment, really, from some of the concerns the developer heard from this council. And I want to go back to some of the comments made earlier. This is how it's working, hearing some of the concerns and fixing some of those concerns with tighter lots and parking ability and that kind of thing. So this is a direct response to that. I actually had a meeting with this developer a week and a half or so ago. We talked about these very things, and I appreciate them stepping up and making these adjustments to amend down their density. So that said, any others?
Yeah, I want to make a couple of comments specific to the comments that were made earlier. In the proposed plan, which you guys obviously can't see sitting there, this, this developer is planning for fifty-four point five nine acres. Forty-nine, almost forty, fifty percent of this hundred and nine acres will be open area. That, that's a, that's obviously a large chunk of land. I understand there's a hill there and that's part of it, but as you've been around Tennessee, you can build houses anywhere if you want to. This developer is really only developing about half of that hundred and nine. So to someone's point about tearing down all the trees, there's going to be fifty acres here that's essentially not going to be developed. He has also incorporated and included in his plan realignment and improvements to Morton Lane as required. So that is part of this plan as well, specific to traffic and the way that they are developing this property. I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that's specifically written into this plan. It's part of the agreement. Well, at this point, it depends on what the traffic study shows. So when we do the traffic study with the proposed plan, if it requires certain improvements, he will be required to make those improvements, whatever those may be.
All right, that said, any other comments? We will open it to the public for a public hearing. Any other, anybody wants to come speak for or against? Okay. And I, I know we gave your name and everything. We have to have you do it again.
Laura Wadi, forty-four twelve Morton Lane. You just mentioned the traffic study. Why would that not have been done prior to allowing this to be rezoned as it was?
It is subject to the traffic study, so the results of that traffic study, they're going to have to implement.
I see it every day, and I watch these high schoolers fly around the roads. I've had numerous vehicles run off the road at our home. There's, it's been a miracle that nobody's gotten killed. We have all sorts of wildlife in that area. Somebody hit our eight-point buck a few weeks ago, and my husband had to go put it out of its misery. I just believe that the volume of the homes in this neighborhood are going to decrease our land value overall.
That's a concern we often hear when somebody doesn't want to see the growth. We hear that, and it's valid, you know, if it's the wrong kind of product. Some of the things that we've done with these developments out here is required a minimum square footage value. I've already begun to see, for example, in Amberton, which is on Morton Lane, it connects to Cedar Hills. I've already begun to see those values being the upper threes and low fours. So hurting somebody's value there, I don't know that that will occur. If you're talking about just using up the raw land and you've got a parcel of land there, you're still protected by your boundary, obviously, but growth is going to come. And all we can do is do our very level best to make sure the water runoff is taken care of, that the value is looked at in a way that protects the citizens in the area, that the roads and the traffic are handled to the best of our abilities through traffic studies and changes. Beyond that, we can't lock the doors on this growth. We just can't tell people they can't do it because your neighbor's the one selling their land. We can't tell your neighbor there that they can't sell their property. So it's a challenge. We understand that. We're doing the very best we can up here to make sure we levy these requirements upon these developers, so that it. these developers, so that at least, at the very least, they're not doing things to harm you and your property. It's hard to have people grow in on you, especially when you've lived out in rural areas like you probably do, you're down at the end of Rocky Fork, you said, so it's tough. But Smyrna and Rutherford County, it's, it's no secret to anybody, Nolansville, Franklin, Murfisburg, it's happening everywhere, so.
How would you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but how would you redesign Morton Lane?
Well, that's not, we're not the engineers. We let the engineers take care of that. That's going to be upon their request, and we have engineers involved doing the traffic studies and all the planning as well. I can't tell you that until they show us their plans.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Wadi, I do appreciate your comment. Any others? Yes, sir. Name and address again, thing.
Dawes Studenberg, seventy-four.
And you had a question about utilities a moment ago, did that answer your question, the C U D question?
Yes, I, I'm glad that that was brought up, about the fire hydrant, you know, the, the water pressure, things like that. Building around there's not easy. It, it sounds like a war zone out there with all the bombing.
Sure.
And I hear it every morning. It rattles my house when that happens, but, yes, it did, it's just, it's going to take a lot of resources to, to build that. I hope it's smart. I, I am concerned about the flooding in the area, because my, my house has a dry stream, and when it rains hard, that stream floods. So I'm concerned with, with this upper property, that, that, that water is, it's got to go somewhere, so that's, that.
Just so you know too, I don't know if you've seen some of these plans yet, we on the planning commission have and workshopped them and so forth. There's a lot of detention placed into these developments to hold water for dissipation.
Yes.
And that is, I don't know if Steve left or not, but we have some engineers in the room here that bring these things to us and store them water and so forth. We, we look at all that.
I appreciate it, thank you. Seventy-eight four one Rocky Fork Campbell Road. Okay, now that we got that out, all right. Well, I just wanted to let you know, I, I'm concerned for, my family and I came over here about two years ago from South Florida. In my area, I came from developments like this, lots of them, down in the Miami area. Cookie cutter neighborhoods is what we came from. And two thousand and seven happened, financial, the real estate collapse. Everybody was in the real estate business and that happened, and, and we saw our property approach about a sixty percent vacancy rate. It hit the area hard. And at the time, it's going to keep growing, it's going to keep growing, yes, yes, and I'm seeing the same thing out here. And my concern is, I want smarter planning for building it to last. Antioch was at one point, if I understand, a really great area, and then it had a decline and so on like that. And, and, you know, when I look at houses and, and the way they're built, you know, there's, there are certain styles of houses that are, are going to increase in value. And my wife and I had a chance to go and look at the houses that were proposed, and, and quite honestly, we were shocked at the density of what was going on. It's obvious, you know, to cram as much as possible into this land and, and, and sell as much as, as possible. And, and when I saw, you know, the types of houses, it was very unlike the surrounding area. Down the road, there is a community that's being built on Ammerville and Rocky Fork. I don't know the, the development name offhand, but.
Clear Creek.
Clear Creek, okay, great. They're all brick houses.
They're about.
They're going to be nice houses.
Close to five hundred thousand, you know, so we're looking at a whole different price category all over the area out there.
Absolutely, and if we look down over Nolansville, there are very, very nice developments going on over there. Why are we going to stop that right in the middle and put this and then this whole community that's over there and cram as much as possible? I think that the standards should be raised for a community like this. There should be requirements for all brick. The requirements that I saw were for brick fronts, which is great, but when I looked at the actual pictures of the drawings for there, I, I didn't see any in, in the plans. I saw a hardy back, which basically looks like vinyl, and, and that didn't seem to, and then putting that much, it just seems so out of place.
God, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to price everybody out of homeownership with your plan?
No, but you could make it smarter, and, and the way I see it is.
There's a, a price point for every product that's put out there, and anymore, you know what the starter home is? It's two hundred thousand dollar condo.
Okay.
That's a starter home these days, and so, single-family residential housing is a hard thing to meet for people who can't afford that five hundred thousand dollar house that you'd like to see a bunch of. We would all like to see that, but it's a difficult product for everybody to afford. So we want to make sure that we're not leaving people out of Smyrna and make it affordable for them as well, and that's part of how you do that. That's the only way we, that's the only means we have to get there.
I think that the growth is sufficient enough that in this particular area, if we can actually increase the, the, the value and, and the look at the area all the way through. I, I don't think that Smyrna really has to have this type of, of, of level of housing in this particular spot. There are other spots, there are lots of spots. I mean, if you go all, I mean, this, this, there's already a development that's happening, and, and that's, matches along with the houses that are there, but along this particular road, this is a beautiful drive. This is really nice, and I'm sure that, that they're a nice house, but it's all of a sudden completely out of place. Like I said, you have a really nice community to one side, you have Nolansville on the other side, you have all these beautiful houses that are going along there. I think that this particular community is, is very out of place for that. I think that some of the other things I want to bring up, I, I am happy that the developer did make some concessions and took some feedback to open up some of the spacing and so on, but I still think that the spacing is, is a little tight. And, you know, I think that, if, if you look at Nolansville, that one development, they, they did a really great job in putting some of their model houses, which are really nice, and they're going to have options to put in their developments and so on like that. But if you look at all the rest of the houses, no one picked the nicer trims or anything. They went for the lower option with that, which is what I'm pretty much going to anticipate is going to happen in, in this particular community with that. We have two daughters, very young right now, but they're planning on attending the Stewart's Creek School. And right now, I understand the school is pretty full, and there's going to be, I don't know, what, seven hundred houses or so on that are going to be put there? I, I'm concerned with the schools. I mean, are there any planned developments to increase schooling around the area?
There's, there's schools being planned further out, Ammerville, which takes a large chunk of Stewart's Creek students to that school. Rutherford County's already planning for that one. I think it's twenty nineteen is when they start construction, is that right, Mark?
The land's been acquired, I believe. I don't know what their proposed timeframe for building it is, but it's, it's out towards the eight forty corridor, closer out towards, yeah, out that way.
To the south or?
Towards.
Towards eight forty from you.
Okay, all right.
I appreciate your comments, we've got a lot of public hearing to do, and I understand what your concerns are. If there are any others, we'd love to hear them, but we, we, you know, I get the gist of where you're coming from, and we appreciate that.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. Public accessibility is a big one. Down in South Florida, getting around traffic was really tough. I'm really concerned with the Ammerville to Morton Lane area. This is going to be a traffic nightmare. There needs to be some type of plan in there to add in sidewalks along this type of road that goes that connect that community.
Although, all of our city communities have sidewalks. If it's the county, they won't, and that's some of the advantages of being in the city, so.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to see something of a requirement for something like that and also connecting in with the green.
We do require the sidewalk, by the way. We do have them, thank you very much. All right, any others?
I didn't ask to readdress while ago. Kenneth Shepherd, eighty-one fifty-five Rocky Fork Campbell Road. My house is in this picture. You mentioned that I talked to you, said that I would, you know, you can consider selling my house. That's because I do fear the value of my home going down, not going up, and setting on a house that's roughly half a million dollars.
How many acres are you on over there, Ken?
Five. That was a requirement when we used to build those houses. You had to have five acres and two full approved septic tank per acreage and all of that. And, and of course, this is changing it. My biggest concern with what you're doing with this right here, is I sat here the night that this final reading and all came about to make this an R three. I, I don't quite understand why you would ask for an R three knowing that you're going to turn right around and ask for a P R D. And that may not be the plan, but that's happened. The same gentleman's asked for the R three across the street, and I'm certain, just as I'm sitting here, that when this is all said and done, he's going to come back to you again and ask for a P R D on it as well. Changing Morton Lane, only way you're going to change Morton Lane, as, as Mr. Sullivan mentioned, is you're probably going to either have to push it up the hill, which is Cedar Hill, and change the angle of it, or force the people owns that little house there, or the property with the white picket fence and the horses and all, out of some of their land in order to straighten that road up. The H G mentioned here, there's several things that, and I, again, I promise, I didn't mean to step on toes with my comment.
No, 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 we, we appreciate your comments, don't get me wrong.
I got, I got a tension, I can say that, everyone that you responded.
I've known you a long time, so.
And that's what I'm saying here, and I don't want to step on yours. I know that you were instrumental in the land deal that, that transpired to get Cedar Hill.
That's what I do for a living.
Your business has been there for a long time.
I've done that for thirty years, so yes, I, I was involved in one of those, which I did not work with.
When you mention, when you mention under, or, or pricing starter homes, or pricing people just right out of getting started home, if you take chronological order or, or physical, actually physical area where you're looking at, first one y'all read tonight came across was on Cook's Lane, and it pretty well adjoins, I guess he was, used to be the, one of the mayors of Smyrna, it joins that property, John's.
It's across the street.
It's on a different road, yeah.
But it's all still part of that R one, the way that y'all, because y'all didn't annex his property in. What I'm getting at though, is you're looking at thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five hundred square foot homes in that P R D on Cook's Lane, which is relative to really, really upper end homes.
On a step system, by the way.
You come on back to Lee Road.
On a step system, so the density there is, is different, yes.
You come on back to Lee Road, and I do, I, I admit, Mr. Collins, he, he backed off of there's ten houses out, you know, less on that hundred and nine acres of land, so that, that's a, that's a start. But you come back to Lee Road, the ones going back over.
Three minutes, boss mayor.
All right.
Into Tilly Lane, uh, Tilly Farms. Those were, I think you said, twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred square foot?
Ken, let me ask you a question. You're beating us up over every development we've had on the agenda tonight. We do need to move on, if you've got a point, please get to it.
My only point is, why can't we try? Why can't you consider asking for these homes to be a little bit fair? I think, I have, I heard it the last time, I haven't been able to find the actual paperwork on it, sixteen, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred square foot homes in S P R D.
Sixteen fifty, I think is the minimum, yeah.
Look at what the, I mean, you see what I'm saying? I'm saying it coming this way. Cedar Hill is even holding.
All right, I'm going to have to call your time up, you know, we, we're on a clock, so.
Cedar Hill is on, you know, never mind.
Thanks, Ken.
But just to, just to make a point here, that is one of the things that we discussed, was looking at lot sizes and, and home sizes and, and building construction. So it's not like, and going back to the rubber stamp, I mean, we have gone over these things over and over, but that was one of the things that came up. I mean, when we were discussing it, it was, it was brought up, and, and we're, our, our thinking is not that far apart, I guess is what I'm, the point I want to make. And, and we appreciate everybody who spoke tonight's input.
It'd be a beautiful thing if we could have three thousand square foot homes built everywhere, but that's just not how it works, and affordably, it doesn't work for everybody, so. All right, so any others? Yes, sir. Need your name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Stefan, I'm with Land Solutions. We were the planning and engineering firm, twenty-nine twenty-five Berry Hill Road. I just want to bring up the fact that when we're going through the process of planning a community, obviously, we took into consideration the comments from Planning Commission from the first hearing last month, but also, we're following the rules and guidelines that are set forth from the town and the subdivision, subdivision regulations that are, are required for us to follow. That, you know, with regards to the storm drainage, making sure that we're not increasing any type of volumes of water runoff that are coming from the site, we're meeting minimum lot size requirements, we're following the rules from the base R three zoning. I think if we weren't to come in with the P R D, I think it was mentioned, with it being R three, you know, if that's three units per acre, while if you subtract out right-of-way for public streets, you know, you could get anywhere over two hundred and sixty to two hundred and seventy lots. So I don't really know that the density is going to change.
It's not that great of a difference.
Exactly, so just want to make sure everybody knows, we're, we're trying to abide by the rules that are given to us from a planning perspective and listening to the comments from both planning, the Planning Commission and the Town Council.
And I think we mentioned, I don't know if you were in the room when we did, but we appreciate you guys taking the suggestions from the Planning Commission.
Sure.
And the council and working those into your plan here, because it was a concern you guys listened, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, and the last thing we want to do is be bad neighbors, right? So.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, we'll close the public hearing, go to the council for a motion.
I have a question, though. The traffic study, I know that the traffic study was required on the prior developments, but, and I think I asked this, well, I know I asked this question at the last meeting, I never saw a traffic study requirement on this particular development.
It wasn't as recommended by Planning Commission. The council could certainly require that as part of your approval tonight, just as you have.
But were we relying on the other one at that point, Kevin? Remind me, I don't recall.
We did, we, we did receive one when Cedar Hills was done. You know, this is obviously more houses, and, and so you may want to do that again.
Okay.
And certainly, I think that's something that y'all could add, just as you have the, you know, the changes that were brought in for first reading regarding the setbacks and ten less houses and all those kind of things that are, are part of the approval tonight. Certainly you could add that as part of your requirement as well.
I don't think the developer would have a problem anyway at this point with that.
If you wanted to go ahead, so that's part of the ordinance, that's the adoption of the ordinance that it was required, traffic study, you could certainly do that.
So is that a question, or is that?
Yeah, it was a question. I, I didn't see it again when I read the.
I think, I would like to add it, if, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to add that a traffic study and whatever comes out of the traffic study be added to the approval of this.
I want to make sure I, I'm clear, it's a motion to approve with a recommendation for traffic study to be included.
For a traffic study, yes.
Okay. There's a motion, do we have a second on that?
I'll, I'll second that. I, I believed that there was one already in here, so I would second that.
Good enough. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Gosh, you know what, we're down to the last public hearing, what are we going to do without anymore? Item M, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map twenty-seven, parcel six oh two, containing approximately twenty-one point seven acres requested by Brian Thuer on behalf of Taylor Farms from C two to P U D. Property is located at four forty-two Nissan Drive. This is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request, four forty-two Nissan Drive. Land use plan would support a commercial development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R one, R six, P and O one, C two, and I two. Proposed P U D is a three hundred and ten thousand square feet industrial building. Access would be from Weekly Lane and at the existing traffic signal at Sammerly Parkway. There will be an additional access to Nissan Drive south of the traffic signal there, the Sammerly Jefferson Park intersection. There is an existing single-family dwelling on the property, which will remain. At some point, it, it will be removed and additional parking will be added to the site. The site would also be allowed to have uses as allowed by the C two district. The planning commission did recommend approval unanimously, with some conditions regarding traffic study and traffic signal modifications, and that there also, there could not be any subdivision of the land for industrial uses, but it could be allowed for C two uses. And I think that's all I've got.
Thanks, Kevin. This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak for or against, come to the podium now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
I second, but also want to make sure that everyone understands this is a second I second, but also want to make sure that everyone understands, this is a second reading and there were modifications made, so this is not a rubber stamp.
That's correct. Alright, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. We almost need a break, don't we? Alright, moving on to new business, Planning Commission report, Kevin?
Yeah, first item of the Planning Commission's report is a request by John Floyd.
I'll read this for you real quick, if you don't mind. Consideration of ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map Fifty, parcel ten. Containing approximately sixteen point nine seven acres requested by John Floyd from R1 to PRD, property is located at four oh one Amville Road, and it's a first reading.
Yeah, this, this property, uh, is about sixteen point nine seven acres. It's located at four oh one Amville Road, it also has frontage, uh, on Harold Lee Drive, which is a frontage road along Lee Victor Parkway, and actually, it also has frontage on Lee Victor Parkway. The land use plan would support an office, retail, multifamily mix here. Surrounding zoning is R1 and PRD, which is the Lee Crossing PRD directly south, as well as across the street through the Adelaide Park, uh, PRD. This proposed PRD is for a one hundred and sixty-two unit townhouse development. Access would be from Amville Road as well as Harold Lee Drive. Uh, there is an existing single family dwelling and other structures on the property which will be removed. The townhouses will be similar in style as the adjoining Lee Crossing development. Did include the pattern book, which has a lot of details regarding amenities and, uh, development phasing and all that in your packet as well. The Planning Commission did review this and recommend approval five four zero against.
Alright, thank you, Kevin. Comments or questions, Kevin, or anybody?
I have a question. Um, Kevin, do you see any future value in taking Harold Lee Road down and connecting it with Legacy Drive at any time in the future?
We did talk about that, the Planning Commission. Um, there was, uh, that was actually something that the staff had, had recommended to be, to be, look at that. Um, the, the, uh, Planning Commission did talk about it and, and decided not to. Uh, there is a pretty significant topography change as you go north from this site, uh, and so it was, um, deemed to be, uh, maybe not, uh, practical to be constructed, so, um.
Deemed to be not practical?
Not practical to be constructed, because it's a pretty deep, it's about a twenty, twenty-two or twenty-four foot drop.
It'd be the Great Wall of China.
Uh, it's a pretty steep drop, you've got some pretty major drainage area through there, some flood plain. Um, so as you go into the, the adjoining property there to the north. So it was determined it was not a, something that we, that they wanted to recommend as part of this.
If you look at it, I'm happy.
Well, just, just so you know, I mean, we looked at it, and you know, one of the things we looked at was, you know, was, was a connection on the major thoroughfare. And it's not. The second thing that, you know, we considered was the topography change. And, you know, it would be quite an elevated road, I, I guess, to get to it, and we also looked at where, you know, that's Life Point property. Um, there's no indication whatsoever, I mean, that's, a lot of that is flood, uh, zone area. And the thing that, that really caught my attention is there's a lot of natural drainage there, right at the tip top of that. And even to extend it, you've got a dental office on the other side of the property that I'm not sure that it wouldn't run.
Right in there.
So, you know, we certainly appreciated the staff's recommendation on that, we looked at it, we waited. And just didn't see that, um, as something that was needed or necessary for this.
So the only question I'll add is, um, the way that that intersection is built, it looks like it was initially thought that it might connect someday. Obviously, not necessarily part of this and all the concerns you've already raised, but do we want to leave way for the potential that that road would need to be pushed through? If the Life Point property ever develops differently, or if, uh, the need for a frontage road along Lee Victory came back up? And the reason I ask that is in the plan that they've submitted, the detention pond would prevent it.
The detention pond was right in the way.
Yeah, so that, that's the only reason I'm asking that, is if we ever thought we might want to extend this road, this plan's gonna put the detention pond for this property in the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good comments, any others? Alright, if none, I need a motion.
A move we approve.
Have a motion, need a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map Twenty-eight, parcel seventy-two point oh six and parcel seventy-two point oh three, containing approximately three point five six acres. Requested by Greg Gamble from C2 to PUD, property is located on Isabella Lane, and this is a first reading.
Yeah, this is a piece of property, uh, it's actually one entire piece of property and part of another tract, uh, totaling about three point five six acres. Currently is on C2, uh, has road frontage on Isabella Lane between President Place and Rock Springs Road. Land use plan would support commercial development in this area, surrounding zoning is all C2. Uh, the proposed PUD is for a fifteen thousand square feet commercial building. Uh, and then a three-story eighty-four thousand square feet climate-controlled self-storage building. Um, the, it did include the packet of information, which shows the layout of the building. Uh, elevations and, and that sort of thing, uh, with your packet. Uh, the Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Thank you, Kevin, and I can tell you, one of the things that we actually liked about this from the planning perspective, and Tim can touch on this if he'd like. Is the low impact of what that building does, and also the aesthetics of it, looks nice. But it's a little difficult to sell that parcel that's not on a major road frontage as a high commercial product. So, we saw win-win with the whole thing, really. Tim, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, I, I think you, you know, you hit on the key points there, you know. Even in our discussions tonight, we've talked about the impact of, of subdivisions, and we've also looked at the impact of, you know, we've, we've been back and forth on Rock Springs Road several times with even office and, and retail development. Um, the building itself, if you, if you look at the elevations, you'll see it's very office-like, it's very complimentary, um, to this area. Uh, you know, in, in my mind, also, you know, you get a bonus where you've got a, a retail center, uh, to, you know, help generate taxes for the town. Uh, from an economic development perspective, I, I can just tell you that this is the, uh, back parcel there where we're showing, uh, the, uh, larger structure, um, is not conducive to retail. As a matter of fact, if you look at it, you'll see a fairly significant detention area off there, so. I've heard the, the term highest and best use, I think this fits the bill, I, I think we, we come away with a very quality product that meets both retail needs as well as the needs of, uh, residential and commercial, um, residents and occupants of this area.
I agree. Alright, any other comments or questions for Kevin?
Comment?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've looked at, looked at the building, and I think the design of it does lend for, um, good aesthetics.
It does, it does.
The fact that it's for storage means that it's not going to be, um, the.
Impact.
The usage, it won't have a lot of impact.
Right.
And I, I can appreciate that, so.
Absolutely, I agree. Good comment, any others? Alright, go to the council for a motion on this?
A move we approve.
I second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? That motion carries, I believe item.
I agree.
The next item's been removed.
Has been withdrawn, yes.
It's been withdrawn, so.
Developer did withdraw that request.
We will move on to the next, which is a consideration of a request from Motlow State Community College for the town to donate approximately point two acres off of Motlow College Boulevard.
Yeah, this is a request the Planning Commission did review as a mandatory referral, uh, request, and, and did recommend it, it's, uh, it's about two, two tenths of an acre of property that kind of lies in between, uh, parcel of land that the town donated a few years ago to the, to Motlow. As well as an adjoining parcel to the south that they had acquired from a, from another owner. And so this area, uh, is, lies in between the two. Um, they basically have, uh, submitted a site plan, it was approved by the Planning Commission last week to, for their new building and all, all of their new parking area that's proposed. And this small area of land would actually allow for, if they owned it, they could actually connect two parking areas together. Provide for better traffic flow in that area, in parking and, and as well, so. Um, so they did request this to be donated to them, uh, they did have a survey and, and everything that we did put in their packet there. Um, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this unanimously.
And based on this drawing, there, we're surrounded on three sides already, and it kind of squares out the property anyway, right?
Correct.
We think it's a good use, or we did in the planning, planning side of things, so, uh, if there's no questions or comments of Kevin, I'll take a motion on this.
A move we approve.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other comments or questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin, that was a long-winded one tonight, so. Package liquor report, no applications for the Town Council to consider at this time, is that right, council?
That's correct.
And approval of terms of, and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Volker, Volkert relative to the update of the comprehensive plan, Kevin?
Yeah, this is me again, sorry about that.
You're back.
This is the contract and, uh, recommendation for the update of the comprehensive plan for Volkert. We did send out an RFQ and did receive, uh, three firms that responded to that. Myself, Tom Rose, and Mike Moss reviewed those. And, uh, the top scoring firm is Volkert, and we would recommend, uh, that they, uh, be awarded the contract. Uh, the fee, I believe, was one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and, and would expect to be finished within about twelve months, beginning in January.
Thanks, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin on this?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Got a couple.
Please, go ahead. You did say that you, that this was budgeted in the, the fiscal budget this year.
Yes.
I, I thought that we'd discussed that before.
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to make sure she was done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm finished.
So are they re, redoing the entire plan, or are they just updating?
There, well, it's, it would be an update to the plan, we do have a plan in place, but it would really be a, a new plan from the standpoint of primarily a land use plan is the biggest part of this. Uh, land use and growth plan, but we're also looking at economic development, uh, utility, police, fire service, all those things. We're, previously, we did look at, the last time they looked at this, which was ten years ago. We did, uh, review the thoroughfare plan at that time, because the thoroughfare plan at that time was a few years old. We're not doing that this time, because we just adopted a new thoroughfare plan, so we don't need, that won't be a part of this. Um, and also, at the last time we did this, um, we kind of parallel to that, we, we had updated the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and we're not going to be doing that this time either. Um, but any other services and, and that sort of thing that would be included, as well as the land use plan.
Okay, so is this amount a flat fee, did I miss that in here?
It's a not to exceed fee, of the one thirty-nine, yes. That would be the, the not to exceed number. It is a flat, is a flat fee, I mean, as far as that goes. Yes, I'm sure they'll charge, typically, they bill us by, once a task is completed, we'll receive a bill and pay a piece at a time.
Will you get a budget for that, like, whatever task they're working on, will they give you some detailed explanation of those funds?
Um, yeah, they'll have, as part of their bill, they'll have that, yes. It's what they're, what they're charging us for, the, the, uh, the scope of work and, and everything just kind of lays out what those tasks are, they did not spell out the cost for each task, but they, they did give us the scope of work and what those tasks are.
So once those tasks are pointed out, do you go over that with Mr. Gill, or how do y'all decide? Who, who's gonna decide, it won't, will it be brought back to us to say, for these tasks, it's gonna be this amount of money, or will you do that with Mr. Gill?
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we would work that with Mr. Gill, but tip, the, the one hundred and thirty-nine thousand is for all, everything that's in their scope of work.
And that's the max.
Oh, I, I understand that, I just would like to know a little bit more about the detailed breakdown of how this money is going to be spent, that's quite a bit of money, so.
Well, we can say, yeah, we could, I could ask for them to, to break down kind of the cost per task and get that to you, certainly, we could do that.
I would like that, thank you.
Good questions, any others?
Just, um, follow on the Laura's comment, I know we budgeted for a comprehensive plan, was the one thirty-nine, for some reason, I thought we budgeted a hundred thousand.
We did budget a hundred thousand, but we also, with the anticipation that we probably look, I think in the CIP, we have another hundred thousand. So we're planned for eighteen, nineteen. Um, so the idea was it would, we would probably strip, spread it over two years.
I got you, okay, so in the, in this budget, there's a hundred, but then there's a hundred in the CIP for the other one, so together.
Anticipated, yes.
Since it's January to January, it crosses.
Right, and obviously, we'll see where we're at in June and full budget accordingly at that time.
Thank you.
Kevin, you said the last time we did this was about ten years ago?
It was, well, actually, we, we approved it in two thousand and seven, yes.
Wow, it's gone by pretty quick. Alright, good questions, any others? And a motion?
Motion that we approve.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, approval of the terms of, and authorization for mayor to execute a contract with Klein Sweeney Associates, associates relative to the downtown master plan.
Yeah, this is something, again, that, uh, we requested for qualifications and did receive, um, actually, ten responses, ten different firms for this one. Uh, and again, the same group of folks scored those, and Klein Sweeney Associates and the team that they're leading, uh, was the top scoring firm. Uh, the, um, we did receive, uh, I believe it was after the packet went out, so we, we did receive their, their scope and, uh, fee. Which is a hundred, a not to exceed rate of a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, and so, did, yeah, I think, I think you were gonna work on the, or they were gonna submit us a, the contract as well, so I didn't know if.
Well, we, we actually submitted and sent you a drop box if you noticed.
Okay, that's what, I thought that's what you.
It's our standard professional services agreement to town.
Right. Um, this is one, we did not specifically budget in this, in the budget. Um, it was something that was, um, has been under a lot of discussion, and my understanding from Mr. Gill, the council wanted us to look at, and so we, um, we had to look at the budget, obviously, again, utilizing the hundred thousand that we've already budgeted for the comprehensive plan, and I could use some of that money to to kind of share through the, at least through the first six months, and then look at it for the next two. This is again, is looking at it, anywhere from eight to six to months to a year, probably on this project as well, so.
Is it possible to get a breakdown of that as well, as tasks come up?
Absolutely, do the same thing for that one, yeah.
Well, and you brought up a really good point, because I remember this wasn't budgeted for, but again, I, I know I asked the question at the last meeting as well. I sit on a committee for this South Lowry Street revitalization, and to me, the plans are almost identical. I know that you said something about enlarging the historic, uh, overlay, but Reagan Smith actually did that. And I brought my, I brought the study, the corridor study that was done. Um, that these two projects just overlap too much, in my opinion, especially for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted for.
Well, this is, this is for a larger area than just the frontage along Lowry Street. Um, we're looking at the, on the east side, going kind of up to Sam Davis Road and to the creek, including up all the way back to the Methodist Church. And then on the other side, going probably south to Ian Springs and west over toward Highland Avenue, and back around to, to Front Street and Rock Springs. I mean, so it is a larger area, I think, um, I think a biggest, my understanding is what the council, or what Mr. Gill had relayed to me, anyway. Uh, what that the, it was to look at the land use, the, any areas of public investment we might need to look at to increase, uh, development in that area. From a transportation, sidewalks, uh, those type of things. And also looking at opportunities for redevelopment, um, and, you know, and then some things that we might could do for, uh, you know, trans, uh, tax increment financing and those type of things. Just give us some options on that to help encourage development and redevelopment in some of those parcels that aren't developed or underdeveloped, and so.
One of the big things that this does is gives, um, gives us, gives the Planning Commission, it gives staff, it gives developers, um, something to go by, something to look at. A, a, an idea of what an overall vision for our downtown area might end up being.
Beyond just Lowry Street.
I'm sorry?
Beyond just Lowry Street, yeah.
Lowry Street, yeah, we've got Lowry Street, I'm not gonna say we've got it nailed down, because nothing's ever nailed down, it's always a moving target, but we have a good idea of where to go with it, and, and we're seeing it come to fruition already, very quickly, as a matter of fact, in my opinion. But this one, like I say, it, it's, uh, um. I- I guess one of the things that makes me think about it is, is that, uh, if you go down Hazelwood, and there are already some things on Hazelwood that may not be on Hazelwood today if we'd have had this plan in effect. Different, um, types of construction that this will encourage, rather than let it go willy-nilly. You know, we've got some opportunities for some open land on the, uh, east side of Lowry Street that could be really tremendous. Could really give us a, uh, a beautiful downtown area to be proud of, even great, not that I'm not proud of what we've got right now, but could expand that and make it into something that's, uh, a lot bigger and covers more area. And, uh, this will, you know, help, like I say, those- all of those people, from us all the way down to developers, have an idea of where we want to go with it.
Doesn't page two seventy in our packet illustrate more so what we're looking at here as far as the downtown master plan? I think it-
I don't know which page you're in, sorry.
Two seventy.
It's-
You guys will look at that. That's- that- when Kevin was talking about just more than Lowry Street, you can see what it- it looks at.
Well, it goes back to what, uh, HG was touching on, from a planning perspective. We know Tim- Tim and I are involved in the planning side of things. And I know that when something's brought to us from planning, if we have this master plan, that is noted on our planning notes, that this does coincide with the downtown master plan. If you don't have a master plan, then it is a little bit more, I guess you could call it-
Difficult to guide.
It's a- it's- right. It's a roadmap.
Well, and I- I think it's illustrated this way. If, you know, probably the biggest complaint I get is what Lowry Street looks like now.
And we've been working hard.
As a matter of fact, it was discussed today, and I actually had a gentleman say, you guys need to buy everything you can buy on Lowry Street. He did, you know? But if you look at Lowry Street now, I bet there wasn't a master plan when most of that came in.
I'm sure there wasn't.
And now we've got the area that, um, is, uh, opposite of Front Street, and I think we can all agree that it's an area, an opportunity for improvement. But if you don't plan, how do you improve it? How do you build it out? And do we end up with a nice Lowry Street portion of it? Uh, and then it just kind of falls off as soon as you go, you know, one block off the street then. So, if we're truly committed to redeveloping and growing and improving our downtown area, this is a small amount of money, respectfully.
Well, and why I do agree, I- and I really also agree with the planning part, and in my opinion, part of planning is budgeting. And when we're getting ready to look at some other items, even, for instance, the widening of Sam Ridley Parkway, which we all know, you know, that's probably the largest complaint that we get is traffic. And just going to T-Dot a couple of months ago, or actually, the talks were going on prior to our budget. And knowing that we would have to put two million dollars with what they are proposing to do, the three million dollars to give us in- from T-Dot. Well, the two million dollars wasn't budgeted. The- the property that we looked at purchasing in cleaning up the Lowry Street area, the four hundred and thirty-one dollars, thousand dollars. You know, the appraisal was ordered in March, but yet that wasn't in this year's budget. So, when you look at doing the demolition and the reconstruction of that, you probably, I don't know, probably have around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that. We looked at Nolan Drive, um, a couple of- we saw rendering last month or the month before. I think it was last month. And- but I didn't see any value put on that. That's not anywhere in the budget. And I saw an email that, uh, November twenty-eighth, I think it was, where, you know, yay, that's going to be- start working, but- and my point is this. Again, part of preparing is budgeting, and I know that we have a good reserve, you know, probably, and I don't want to put anyone on the spot, because I didn't realize that, uh, Mr. Gill wasn't going to be here this evening. I thought that's why the meeting was changed from Tuesday till today. But we are just- and I feel like I'm going off track. Because the sales tax is down, what was it, a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars through the end of October. I just- I think there's a lot going on that we're not budgeting for, going into the reserves that we have a little over thirty million dollars. Well, it'll start eating away before we realize it. And I just- I like to be prepared by budgeting myself.
I think you can be prepared, and I think a budget serves as a blueprint, but I also think when the opportunity comes, you prepare yourself to do it. And you mentioned the reserves themselves. We knew that reserving was there, and we knew that we would have projects that may present themselves, and that's part of the budgeting process. I don't think we could walk away from Sam Ridley Parkway. We've gone to a state representative, our state representatives, on hundreds of occasions to say, hey, we need state funds, we need state funds, we need state funds. And it's always, well, you know, I got to go rename something, or I've got to, you know, attend this function or that function. And I think it would have been irresponsible for us not to look at what we've done from a reserving perspective, having money put aside. And when opportunity presented itself, adjusted the budget and then moved with it. I don't know of any company hardly that ever operates on a- on a precise budget down the road every day, every month, without something that presents itself that they have to respond to. And I think this is just being nimble, and I think it's also not only being nimble, but it's being nimble while being responsible. And that was part of the reserve process as far as building our reserves.
And again, I agree. I- I think that the budget is there as a guide. However, again, when we are having conversations prior to our budget year and us beginning to approve budgets, then I think those items need to be included in the budget year, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that was one thing I wanted to clarify. The, uh, the property, the Tower World property, we originally talked about that in March, but we found out Tower World was under a forty-year lease and did not want out of that lease. So, we left that project and thought we couldn't move on it. We only found out in October that now Tower World had changed their mind, and they wanted out of that lease. So, that's why we re-engaged. So, that's why it wasn't budgeted. It wasn't budgeted because we were told we didn't have an option to purchase.
Well, then, I guess I'm confused why the town ordered the appraisal in the first place.
We ordered the appraisal then, because we thought we were moving forward with it. And we were going to go ahead and get the appraisal in the event that it opened up. Because Tower World said they were wanting to see how their new property went, so whether or not they were going to maintain the lease or not. So, the appraisal was ordered, and by the time we found out we weren't, we just continued to go ahead and let's get that appraisal, because it's going to come open, whether it's six months or a year. So, we didn't budget purchasing, because we didn't have any guarantee that we'd be able to do so.
And I think all- I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay. It- it was my understanding that they were in a- in the lease. I mean, the lease was a long-term lease.
It was, and they didn't want out. Tower World didn't want out originally. They were going to use the property as like overflow. And I guess, for whatever reason, they came back in October and said, if you're still interested, we would like out.
Well, just using that as an example, I mean, I understand where everybody's coming from, because we're all trying to follow a budget as best we can. The, uh, the opportunity that, in this particular situation, I think, that came to us was, uh, not the best timing necessarily, but it's an opportunity. So, for us to sit back idly by and let another, uh, garage or tire station or something like that move in and begin to use that facility and sign another thirty or forty-year lease, whatever the case is, however long it is. We've missed the opportunity at that point to do something about that, and our promise has always been, we're going to clean up Lowry Street. We're all dedicated to that. And I think, in that particular case, anyway, from a budget perspective, Tim used the word nimble. We had to be nimble there and make a move. Uh, I- I'm not going to call on, uh, anybody necessarily from a budget perspective, but I know Rex is in the room. If you all have questions that pertain directly to that budget, we'll direct it at Rex and ask him if you'd like to. But Rex, if you would, just real quickly, speak about our, uh, our reserve and how healthy we are there, and- and maybe, uh, why we're healthy. And the benefits of having that is to be able to be nimble and do those things. Real quick, if you don't mind.
The, uh, I have a draft of the audit from two thousand and seventeen. The general fund is going to have in excess of thirty-one million dollars.
And it's not for us to just sit on that money if we have opportunity, because the citizens want us to spend the money to improve the town, correct?
Yes.
But we do want to keep a reserve and be healthy too.
When you build reserves, you- you make yourself a little more flexible.
Exactly. It's easier to borrow cheaper money that way, too.
A bad cash flow basis when unusual opportunities, you know, arise. So, from a financial standpoint, we've- we've certainly got the funds.
We've been a pretty healthy city and been fortunate. Uh, there was a comment earlier by somebody who made the two thousand and seven comment. I re- I was here then. I remember that time, and we didn't have hardly anything to talk about in meetings. We didn't have hardly anything coming in planning commission, did we, Kevin? It was dry. The town was dried up. The economy was dried up. So, to sit here and see this and see the growth that's taking place, I mean, we're blessed, and we've got to look at it that way. Whether we like growth or not, we're blessed to have it from a financial perspective, because at least we have something going on locally. We've got something going on here. If you would, too, speak real quick about the December sales and things that will offset, hopefully, some of this, uh, concern she has from a tax perspective.
Well, going down through the year, sometimes you- you- you may have a little bit of a deficit on- on the budget, because of the seasonality of the way that sales taxes come in. And, um, I think we're, you know, with that deficit that we have, I think when Christmas season hits and the sales tax come in from that, we'll probably catch up.
We'll close the gap pretty good, I would think. So, I just wanted Rex to speak to that, so that everybody up here that's got discussion going on about our- our concerns, and they're valid. Or, you know, lack, uh, budget items. I'm glad you're here, so that we could have you speak to that just real quick for us. Any questions for Rex? All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding the downtown master plan that Kevin just spelled out?
Yes, I have a couple of things. To speak to the being nimble, I- I'm glad that we are. But regarding this, I know we- we did not budget for this. And I understand it's a hundred and thirty thousand as opposed to a more significant number. My concern is, I do want to be a good steward over the taxpayers' money. And the fact that Lori raised the point about, we have a master plan that Reagan Smith, am I correct?
Reagan Smith.
Has created for the historic downtown. I only wanted to find out, is there a way to expand on that plan, so that we don't have to spend so much money to get a more overall layout of what we're wanting to do in that area? Is there any way to be able to work off of that, so that we are not having to spend so much money?
I mean, certainly, we could look at that, I guess, and talk to them directly. I mean, they're actually on the team with Klein-Sweeney, um...
To see if we can save some money.
See if we can save some- I mean, we-
To save money and the fact that we already have a plan that addresses a portion of what we're wanting to do in downtown, rather than starting over, can we not expand on that? That's my concern.
Is it really a start-over, or is it-
That's what I'm asking.
Is it an expansion of? And if we're doing an expansion of, would we still not be spending money?
That's what I'm trying to understand. Is it an expansion of, or are they starting over with a new plan altogether, so that that's why we're spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? That's what my question is. Is it something we are expanding on, or is it something that they're having to start to create separately?
Yeah, certainly. Well, we're going to build on what's already been done. I mean, we're not just going to scrap-
Whoever does.
What we've done, whoever we hire, yeah. We're not going to scrap what's been done, certainly. I mean, obviously, we're going to be building on what's already been done. It's an expanded area, and we are expanding somewhat the- because we're looking at some other things from an economic development standpoint, through the TIP financing and other things like that. That are something we really didn't look at with Lowry Street.
Right. And you mentioned some tax breaks and things of that nature. And I know that when we had a workshop with Reagan Smith about the historic plan, that was one of the things we talked about with them. So, I wasn't sure if some of those ideas are being given to Klein and Sweeney to go forward with, or are- you said that they're kind of partners, so is part of this something they're going to work on? I just need more explanation as to what the services are going to be.
Yeah, Klein-Sweeney is the main- that's who the contract would be with. But Reagan Smith and then Community Solutions Group as well are both subcontractors to Klein-Sweeney. So, they would all three be working on the project, and Reagan Smith, so they would be working on it. But again, it's really- it's an expansion of what we've already done to a larger area. Also looking at, again, from an economic development standpoint, but also looking at the infrastructure in that area, other changes. If we want to maybe intensify development down there, maybe have some more mixture of uses, mixed-use buildings, more multi-story buildings, things that could happen. Is the infrastructure there to support it from a utilities standpoint, roads standpoint, sidewalks, those kind of things, looking at all that, and a big picture, from a big picture. Beyond what's the frontage of Lowry Street, to include all that whole area, well, on both sides of Lowry, in front. So...
But in a lot of ways, Kevin, what we're- what we've got is like highway district, and what we're looking at going into is historic and more just general commercial district, correct?
Right. And mixture of uses, too. I think at some point, whatever comes out of this, I think one thing that may come out of this is we look at, there are some areas that maybe we want to go ahead and look at some mixture. Something what's- what we have along Lowry now, on that- on the east side, the- those frontages where you have the downstairs retailer office and the upstairs, it could be an apartment or whatever kind of thing. It's something similar to that, expanding that into that, the second, third street and all that area back in there. So...
And I want to expand a lot, but again, after sitting on this committee for a year, uh, basically, everything that you're saying is- is what we discussed throughout that year's process, but so that's...
Was it us? What did us that asked for you to do this?
Well, I think you asked Mr. Gill to do it, and he asked me.
Well, okay. So, this is a result of what we've asked to be done, right?
Yes.
The whole council, correct?
I- I don't know. I was- my understanding is-
I'm just saying, I'm just clarifying here, because, uh, this is something we pressed upon him.
Yeah. His message to me was, he wanted- that the council wanted him to look into this, and he asked me to put this together, yes.
All right. But they're all good questions. They're fair questions. I appreciate all of them.
Well, you know, one other thing, Sam Ridley Parkway gets a whole lot of emphasis, and- and as it should. But then, by the same token, the downtown area, the older parts of town, they're just as important to the character and community and well-being of our town as- as Sam Ridley Parkway is. And, uh, you know, being sure that in the long run, we still have- have, um, a viable area for our people to congregate, I think is very important.
Well, how many times have- have you heard, or have I heard, we don't have a grocery store on this side of town? We don't have, you know, I mean, you can go down the list of what we don't have, or what's not on the downtown area, or what's not on this side of town versus what's on Sam Ridley now. And you're seeing some of that growth being pushed out to Amble Road. So, I don't know how you get there without having a plan in place that grows this area to make it attractive, where people want to come in and set up a business, and, you know, maybe it's a smaller grocery store, or some type of grocery store that fits this niche here. But if you're not planning for it, and you're not developing it, it's not going to happen.
I agree with what you said.
It's going to take a long time.
I just wanted to make sure we're being good stewards of how you say.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, we all want that, I think. So... Any other questions or comments on the downtown master plan? Good conversation. Well worth hearing. All right. We'll go to the council for a motion, then.
So, move.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion?
So, is this also checking to find out, as a part of our motion or as a part of our approval, Kevin, you said that you would check to see how they- the three would be working together? Will that be done as a part of this approval?
Sure. Yeah, how the three will be working together, as well as getting a de- a detailed cost for the ca- for- per task. cost per the ca, per, per task as you requested to.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, and any opposed?
Nay.
All right, moving to next one, item E, consideration of resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and forward the resolution to the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation relative to the I-24 smart corridor project. Hi, Tom.
Hey, guys, uh, Vice Mayor, thank you very much. Basically, uh, the mayor, Mr. Gill, Kevin and myself have been working with TDOT, and it's, uh, some of their consultants on the I-24 smart corridor project. What that is, is we've been collaborating along with City of Murfreesboro, Laverne, Rutherford County, Tennessee Highway Patrol, Metro Nashville, RTA and MTA to help develop a plan, uh, to be able to even out the flow of traffic between Rutherford County and Davidson County, so, uh, to look at different, uh, ways to bring the peak travel times down to a more consistent travel time between the two areas. Basically, this resolution is, uh, something that all the, uh, all, all the different cities and counties that are involved and the different, um, uh, groups are involved are, have been asked by TDOT to sign, it's just a resolution saying that we are going to work together with everybody on this project.
It's a commitment.
It's a commitment.
Right. Questions for Tom on this? Sounds like a no-brainer to me. Thank you, Tom. All right, uh, need a motion?
I'll move.
HG, and then Steve? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
You know, I just, the other day I had the occasion to talk to a traffic engineer, and I asked him about this, and, and what I asked him was, does this have shelf life? That after so much time, does this become obsolete? And he indicated that, yes, it does, but another thing that he indicated was that putting this out there would, um, in essence, do more for alleviating traffic situations than any amount of money that you could put in as far as infrastructure in the ground. And, yeah, it was just real interesting to talk to him about this and, and how sold he was on this particular project, it's really, you know.
Tom, would that go, I'm sorry.
No, what do you have?
Would that go into, uh, scheduling mass transit, I mean, a number of things?
It, it is a wide variety of things, and, uh, it's short-term, things that they can do, what they're looking at, it might be anything from like ramp metering, uh, it might be, uh, coordinating ITS, the, uh, traffic lights to bring people around, uh, if, if there's a major problem on the interstate that's completely, completely shuts it down, directing people or on certain routes to get around it. It's working with Waze as well, the phone app, you have something you may have for travel times, uh, working with them to be able to, um, give them data and then give TDOT data as far as the best travel routes to get in and out in Nashville to help give people alternatives and better understanding of the best routes to take. Uh, but, and, and it also includes like, uh, there's bus on shoulder, it might be sometime in the future, it may be something like a more of a mass transit type system as well. So, really, like Mr. Cole had mentioned, they are looking at everything from a short-term, what can we do this first year, as well as through the next twenty years to, uh, plan for twenty years of growth down the road.
Kinda update us on where we are with the ITS system?
Uh, okay, with the fa, there's two different parts to the ITS project, there's phase one and phase two.
And tell everybody what that is, for those listening that don't know what that is.
Uh, ITS is short for Intelligent Transportation System, and what it is, is we're going to be, uh, through fiber optics, we're gonna be integrating, uh, a lot of the traffic light signals, uh, uh, traffic signals in town, bringing them back to Central Traffic Operations Center, being able to, uh, have video cameras out there to take a look at traffic, see what the flow is like, if there's any issues that pop up, vehicles that are not, um, uh, clearing a queue, he, the traffic operation person might be able to see that, and then increase the, the, uh, the amount of time that it takes for like left turns to clear out. Also, if he sees a repeated problem, a pattern at a certain intersection, it may be, uh, spur further investigation, what's going on. If there is a problem with a traffic light, a sig, a traffic signal, he'll be able to know almost immediately what the problem is, rather than sending a person out there in the field to try to figure out what the problem is. That's all a part of, uh, the ITS project, and like I mentioned, it's broken into two different parts. We have funding for phases one and two, and we have phase, separate funding for phases three, four and five. Right now, we're in the, uh, right-of-way acquisition phase for, uh, phases one and two, and one of the items coming up, uh, uh, next item F will be to provide funding to, um, complete the bid book and get approval from TDOT to move into construction phase. Um, and then ultimately, phases three, four and five, right now, that's still in, uh, we were just working on getting the first parts of, um, funding approval for NEPA on those projects.
So, that's a good segue into the next item, but, uh, if y'all have any more questions, I think we have a motion and a second already on the floor, don't we, Diane?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments or questions on this item before we move to the next one? If none, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Tom, since you have the next one, I want to, uh, let me go ahead and read that for you. Approval of terms and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Gresham Smith and Partners relative to additional services for the ITS phases one and two. You just spoke about that a little bit.
Yes, uh, we did receive approval on the construction plans. Now, we're, like I said, we're in the right-of-way acquisition phase, where they look at the bid documents, bid books, the advertisement, DB goals, as well as the, uh, uh, rainbow plans from the different, uh, utility providers out there. We're, this, a little less than ten thousand dollars for Gresham Smith to put the bid documents together, uh, so we can make that submitted to TDOT so that we can get approval and move to construction phase next.
Questions at all?
When do you think it'll start?
As soon as it's approved, right. You know, realistically, we're probably looking about the next two months before all the bid information is submitted, it's gonna take, and hopefully, they'll make an approval on that about two months afterward, uh, maybe in the next five months, we should be able to go into, I'm hoping to be able to, I'm hoping that we'll have notice to proceed to construction phase, and at that point, we can let the project for construction.
Any others for Tom?
I'm hopeful on it, I, yeah.
Tom, don't promise what you can't deliver.
Cross your fingers.
Because we're all waiting, please stop asking.
It seems, it seems like, um, Stonecrest, the ITS, Sam Ridley, you know.
There's always something.
It seems like they're all gonna line up, and we're gonna have about fourteen construction problems at the, uh, projects all at the same time. Because we keep hearing basically the same timeline for each one.
Yeah, right. We're on the precipice of a lot of these.
In this case, Orange Barrels will be a welcome sight.
That's right, I think so.
Any other questions for Tom on this? Need a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Gresham Smith and Partners relative to the Sam Ridley widening Potomac extension project. Tom, this is your.
Thank you. Uh, we have four respondents on this request for qualifications, Reagan Smith, Kimmy Horn, Gresham Smith and Weiser Consultants, and, uh, based on the selection committee, uh, Gresham Smith was ranked first, and we're asking for approval for them.
All right, questions, comments? Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. The next one, consideration of resolution authorizing the ma, that authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Tennessee Department of Transportation, the agreement number one seven zero one five zero for state project number seven five LPM dash S three dash zero seven one. You know what that means.
Absolutely not, um, uh, thank you, but, uh, basically, this is, uh, the mayor, Mr. Gill, Kevin, Raceby and myself have been working with TDOT to, uh, get funding for widening of Sam Ridley as well as, as the extension of Potomac Place. Uh, this is an agreement between the town and, uh, TDOT for that LIC funding. It's a total of three million dollars, two million dollars would be from LIC funds, and one million dollars is given to us extra, um, from TDOT for, out of discretionary funds for the project.
Couple of years off, you think?
You know, we're, we've had several meetings with TDOT to try to fast-track the project as much as possible, and at, we're looking at about a year and a half from now, roughly, to be able to start construction.
I know that's gonna be a welcome sight when everybody sees that taking place. So, Sam Ridley has some widening plans coming for the public listening in, just know that these things move like turtles, but once they get there, we're, we're glad to see them, so. A lot of red tape involved.
It took us a long time to get it from two lanes to four also.
Yeah, that was a turtle, too, wasn't it? All right, great, we welcome that, welcome that information, for sure. Any other questions for Tom on that widening of Sam Ridley up near the interstate?
Tom, just having a state project number assigned to it is really big.
Yeah, that's a label.
It is, it takes a lot of, uh, work and coordination and effort, a lot from the mayor and Mr. Gill and phone calls and relationships that they've developed with TDOT to be able to make this, uh, possible.
Any other comments? Need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Item I, consideration of an ordinance amending the municipal code Title III Municipal Court, Chapter One, Town Court Administration, Section Three dash one oh one, establishment of full-time town court. Section Three dash one oh two, maintenance of dockets, Section Three dash one oh eight, imposition of fines, penalties and costs, and Section Three dash one one zero, disposition and report of fines, penalties and costs. This is a first reading. Mr. Peach?
Mayor, council, as we discussed at the workshop, this, as we're working towards the, uh, recodification, we've sought out our directors that, uh, have a part in, in certain areas of the municipal code and to make those changes prior to the, uh, recodification with American Legal. And what we've observed here with, in speaking with the judge and, and speaking with the clerk, these changes or the amendment will not change the operation or any substantial, uh, changes with the, with the court. Basically, it's just cleaning up the ordinance to clarify what the statutory duties are of the clerk and of the judge, uh, with who's keeping the dockets, uh, who's responsible for the accounting. And then while we were in there, we also, uh, since we do have two great, uh, female leaders down there, it was also a good time to remove those gender references as well, and, and that was remaining in that area of the code.
All right. Questions for, for Jeff? None, need a motion?
I move we approve.
A second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. I see the bottom of the page.
You gotta turn it.
No, I know, I, I, but I see it. Consideration of an ordinance amending municipal code Title Sixteen, Streets and Sidewalks, et cetera, Chapter One, miscellaneous Section Sixteen dash one one zero, parades, et cetera, regulated, this is a first reading.
And I will begin, Nathan, as I mentioned last time, Nathan has put a lot of work into this, uh, but just to give you a brief overview, um, currently, uh, within Rutherford County, we've dealt with issues of, 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 not within Smyrna so much, but we've noticed in Murfreesboro where they had issues with being prepared for, uh, large gatherings, public gatherings, uh, exercising First Amendment speech, uh, parades and, and things of that nature. With, this is just being proactive, our current ordinance, uh, is basically silent towards a lot of issues, and we wanted to ensure safety, uh, for our citizens and for the participants in these types of events. So, uh, Nathan looked at what some of our neighbors have, uh, and also implemented some of his own, uh, ideas into that. Um, and, uh, obviously, it's, it's pretty lengthy, uh, the, the main issue is that it breaks it down between parades and, uh, gatherings.
Gatherings.
And also, there are also, for breaking news events as well. Uh, but it gives the, uh, the chief of police, uh, an opportunity to, to weigh in and to make sure that his folks are prepared, and also that the folks that are having the events have some skin in the game as well, if they need to have security of those types of things. It's not just the taxpayers that's bearing the burden of, of all of those. Um, as I mentioned to you last time, uh, what was outstanding that we needed to discuss was the permit fees.
Mm-hmm.
And looking to, uh, other communities to see kinda what is the average, the common denominator seemed to be, uh, around a hundred dollars for parades. Uh, some communities did not break out the, uh, parades from.
Gatherings.
The gatherings, however, some do, as example, Metro Nashville, it's three hundred and thirty dollars for the event, a hundred dollars for the parade, and if you had a parade that ended in an event, then you had to pay the four hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, my recommendation to you, and this is only a recommendation as well, is that, uh, a hundred dollar parade and a two hundred dollars for events would be my recommendation. Obviously, you don't have to take that recommendation, but that seems to be, uh, conducive with, with what the area has, has accepted.
Thank you, Nathan, thank you for your work on it. Appreciate you looking into that for us. Any questions for Jeff on this? I think the, uh, by looking at neighboring municipalities and getting an idea based off what they do for gatherings and parades, uh, we're kinda hitting, uh, the average on parades and, and gatherings, it seems to be even quite affordable compared to Metro Nashville and so forth, so I don't know if any of you others have any comments or wishes on that, but.
Only comment I would, I would, quick question, really, did you see in any of those other ordinances, um, maybe a graduated scale related to the gatherings? And the reason I ask that is, you have twenty people coming for an event, that the cost to the town is much smaller than if you had an event like what we, what they tried to plan for Murfreesboro. Um, it doesn't seem respective of the cost if it's just a flat two hundred, no matter how size, what, how big the gathering's gonna be.
Sure, and you can correct me, uh, if I'm misremembering anything, Nathan, that from, within the ordinance, however, if they have to have security of those types of things, that's gonna be supplemental to all of this. There's also a, a mechanism built within the ordinance that if, if the organization for some reason could not afford to have, uh, those funds to have a public event to exercise the First Amendment, that can be considered by the, the town manager to, to adjust as needed. Obviously, we want, I prefer consistency, um, but it's something that we can look at, but it was kind of, you know, two hundred dollars with twenty-five folks, or a lot of times, the problem is, you can start off with twenty-five folks and it can work into a hundred, uh, or more so, or maybe everyone starts putting down, well, we'll, we estimate we'll have about twenty folks, so we'll get, we'll get the, uh, uh, hundred dollar deal instead of the two hundred dollar deal, but, uh.
I guess, understanding, understanding that there's, I guess, flexibility for additional security or traffic control or those types of things above the two hundred that, that I guess could be put on the event, then two hundred dollars for basically an application fee seems reasonable.
The, the fee is just for, really, to think of it, too, as well as, they're not gonna be paying us for the officers going out there, those types of things, really just the administrative fee for us to do the planning perspective. Um, but however, as part of those events, we can require them that, hey, if you're going to have this, then you're gonna have to hire, uh, five security officers or show us a plan that you have the ability to keep the folks, uh, in this roped-off area, and you have the personal security that you, uh, need to have for, to have such an event.
It, it's not much different than the, the, the fares that we approve over by the Bowlin Alley, and we require them to have traffic control, uh, which they usually pay Chief Arnold's off-duty or maybe even on-duty officers, I'm not sure how it's covered, but, um, I know they do cover that, so, understand.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the, uh, councillor suggested rates.
Of one hundred and two hundred?
Yes, sir.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Jeff, are you taking the next one? Appointment of one member to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve unexpired term ending twenty twenty?
I sure do.
All right.
Um, you should have, uh, before you, uh, applications for Board of Zoning Appeals.
We do.
Um, and what I will do at this time, if, if there are any. And what I will do at this time, if there are any nominations for someone to be appointed to board of zoning appeals, I'll take those at this time.
I would nominate Wendell Davis.
Wendell?
Davis.
Wendell Davis. Have a nomination for Wendell Davis. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, the nominations will cease. Board, if you will make a affirmative vote for Wendell Davis as.
By saying aye? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That sounds favorable.
Yep.
All right. I don't know if Wendell's watching at all, but Wendell, you're getting ready to go to work for nothing. It's for free.
Next week, actually.
Next week, probably. And I'll tell you what, I will say this, I have served on this board of zoning appeals. I know Steve does an amazing job on the board of zoning appeals and it's, it's a tough board sometimes. It's a hard one. So thank you, Wendell, if you're watching or if you hear this, that we appreciate your willingness to serve on a, sometimes a challenging board.
I can assure you, I've been doing it for several years and I can only count maybe twice.
One time that it was easy?
No, twice that we've had five folks show up.
Yeah, well.
So I'm looking forward to having a fifth person who says he can make those commitments. We've got four folks that have been very consistent this year and this adding a fifth, we might actually have a full committee, which would be really nice.
It's amazing. That's a tough board. Good, appreciate your service on there because that's hard work. I've been there.
It's fun. I did, I've decided to run after.
You just wanted to get off of it. You thought you were going to get off of it.
I didn't know I was going to stay on.
Kevin, we got stories, don't we? We're not going there tonight. Okay. All right, approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an inter-local agreement with the city of Laverne relative to sewer service. Who's got this one?
Mayor Council, as far as operations, if you need to have any questions with that that we've kind of discussed in the workshop, Mike can answer that. But as far as the agreement itself, this would be an agreement with the city of Laverne for us to serve sewer service in this basin that is off of Blair Road for subdivision there in Laverne. I have spoken with Evan Cope and, who's the attorney for Laverne and also Bruce Richardson. They have received, obviously, they've received this agreement. They've notified me, they've not sent back any changes. I heard from Bruce today and said that he did not see any issues that he had with what we had proposed and that they, I believe, will be going to their council on January the 2nd, I think is what I heard today, 2nd, 3rd. So it looks like it's ready to go. And they, basically, they will do the billing and then we'll pay the town.
Good deal. Any other questions? We talked about this last month as well, so. All right, need a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are at other. Anybody have other? No? No other?
No other.
Okay. Status reports? Do you want to do that for Mr. Gill?
Well, I can. He's not left me anything, but I do want to mention, just because we've even brought up a couple of issues tonight, Councilman Cole, maybe speaking about it later, wasn't for sure, but Councilman Cole and myself attended MPO and GNRC, Greater Nashville Regional Council, this week. And I did want to mention, the council had brought up the timeline issues sometimes with the road projects involved, T dot funds or federal funds. And just this week, we were, all the mayors are gathered from the region. That precise issue is of concern to everyone as far as, everyone's having the issues of timing, that you're always wondering, when is this coming? When is this coming? So it's not just for Smyrna, it's going on throughout the region.
We didn't think it was. We didn't think we were being singled out, right?
Right. But I just thought it was good to mention for the public. And also, the meeting with the GNRC specifically in the afternoon was about solid waste and dealing with it on a regional landscape. You know, we've, Mr. Gill and Councilman Cole have attended meetings here in Rutherford County because of Middle Point and then how we're going to be running out of room at the landfill over the next few years or, they said a lot longer in this meeting, but I think what I last heard was six to seven years possibly.
And they talked about.
Here for Rutherford. But all the communities are having to deal with that. And they've just beginning the conversation. Obviously, there was no answers gained that day, but they wanted to begin the conversation between the municipalities and the counties within the entire region to figure out what these plans are going to be for dealing with our trash.
Well, and also, they bring up the point that everybody's focused on how big the problem that the transportation is and how much it's going to cost. Well, this is nearly as big and is going to cost nearly as much. And like you said, it's a regional problem, just exactly like transportation, but it's the next boogeyman over the hill, if you will.
Well, the growth too. I mean, the growth just adds to that problem.
Absolutely.
Well, and I believe that Mac Nolan made a good point when he stated that.
Yeah.
We have to have citizens begin to look at garbage as a utility. So even though we're, you know, we've been taking it to our, the community's convenience centers or those types of things, we've been lucky here in Rutherford County because we've got the landfill here, there's no cost when we take it to the convenience center, those types of things. You don't really see a fee for garbage from the county when you take those things. But when this closes, there's going to be a lot more cost involved. And he just referenced that we need to kind of look at it like we do with water and sewer and those types of things, that it's a fee that everyone has to take part in.
Another thing that came out of that meeting, Tom, it made reference to our contacts at the state that Mr. Gill and Mayor Reed have made over the course of time. Mayor Reed was, elected the new chairman.
Yes.
And something to be very proud of and she represents our community very well. I didn't mean to take your time.
No, that's all right.
That's Mr. Gill's time. You didn't take his time.
Oh, okay.
We're going to get to the attorney's time here in just a second. Anything else, Mr. Gill?
You know, he'd be angry if I was taking so long too.
Diane, I didn't mean to skip you, but do you have anything you need to add?
Sure, I have.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Positive.
I'm positive.
All right. Jeff, anything from the legal perspective? Nathan, do you have anything from the legal perspective?
No, sir, I don't.
All right. Raquel, do you have anything you want to add this evening?
I would just like to extend a Merry Christmas and safe holiday season to everyone and to just ask everyone to remember the reason for this season. And if you can go out and help someone, please take that upon yourselves during this holiday season to be a blessing to another person.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Cole?
My Merry Christmas statement pales in comparison to what she just said, so I just concur.
Of course, Merry Christmas to everyone. And if you're a grandparent such as I, Ibuprofen is needed. I just returned from visiting my family, daughter and her family in Florida with a three-year-old, a five-year-old, and been doing some Ibuprofen since I got on the plane last night. So, you know, seriously, enjoy your friends, enjoy your family, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
How about you, Steve?
Obviously, I agree with everyone's Merry Christmas sentiments. It's my favorite time of the year. I know that's a song, but.
You want to sing a little of that?
Y'all don't want me to sing.
I think we do.
I can do some things, but singing's not one of them. I did want to mention one thing. Earlier today, I got the opportunity to speak and actually be present at a historical marker that was placed here in Smyrna at the corner of Enon Springs Road and Florence Road. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Francis Victory Oldham and Marty Luffman, our local historian, for the efforts, along with many others, Mike Sparks, Don White, several other folks that were involved in getting this marker placed. The thing that really strikes me about this marker, until Francis called, I had never even researched Enon Springs or why it was named that way. And the marker is for a place called the Enon Meeting House, which turns out to be a Baptist church that was located between Enon Springs, Florence Road intersection, and the river. It was actually burned by the Union Army in 1864 and five years later, Smyrna was founded. So this predates even our town. But what's interesting about this historical marker is lots of Civil War and historical markers exist all around the state, but not many of them remember the slaves and the endangered servants that had to sacrifice and suffer to build our state and our country. And this marker does pay a slight homage to them. Honestly, I don't think it goes quite far enough, but it does mention that this church was built by slaves that were owned by John Nash Reed. And it's, it was an honor to be able to be involved in a marker that includes even sometimes the bad parts of history, not just the good parts. I think it's important that we recognize it and we remember it so that we don't ever repeat those mistakes again. So congratulations to Francis. I know it was a lot of work and a lot of effort to get this done. She spent a lot of hours out in the woods looking for a cemetery and a spring and a building, which it took her a while to find. But if you get a chance, corner Florence and Enon Springs Road, stop by and read it. It's very interesting.
Just to add, it's along the sidewalk, so you can't actually pull over and go and read it off of, stand on the sidewalk instead of being in the road.
I think it was a Clayton Homes establishment that we parked in today and then walked down the sidewalk to it.
We did.
So you can kind of park off the road there and walk right to it. And then, of course, as I said already, Merry Christmas. That's it.
Thanks, Steve. That was New York.
It was great, actually. We had a wonderful time. The explosion that happened at 42nd and I think it was 8th, 7:30 a.m. the Monday before, I was at Carlos's Bakery having coffee and a pastry. One week later, at the exact same time, the explosion happened right underneath it.
Glad you're back, Steve.
So I got back a week early, which is good. But it was actually very enjoyable. Business must be well. There's a lot of.
Was that an anniversary gift?
It was 25th anniversary. We.
What a nice guy.
We went the first time.
For all you husbands out there, listen up.
Fifth anniversary, went back for our 25th, so 20 years later.
All right. Thank you, Steve. How about you, Lori?
I just wish all of the employees and their families and all of the citizens a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
That's all?
That's it.
We have some announcements on the screen that I am being told I need to give a little homage to. So Friday night, Cookies with Santa, December 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's at the SOAC Center, the Outdoor Adventure Center. I know Mike's probably expecting a lot of kids to come down there for that. And then you have the New Year's Eve Bash, Sunday, December 31st, from 6:00 till 12:30. So it looks like you're going to go past midnight for some of the older folks, if you want to come party till after midnight. This is the place to do it. That's on January 1st, Ring in 2018 with the SOAC Center again. This is, this is a kid-friendly night, is that right, Mike? So you can bring your kids and drop them off, I think, in the same building. Let them have a great time. This also could coincide with the Rotary's Bash going on next door. So what, what they're saying here for you Rotarians, and we have some in the room, if you have children and you want to go to your bash, you too can drop your kids off at this event. So they want to make, make sure it's open, open to you tonight for that. Couple of other announcements I've got here, that's all for the screen. We want to give condolences to Chef Mike Osborne down at the SOAC Center, the Banquet Center. His father passed away, so we want to make sure we remember him and his family. It's never a good time. This is probably one of the worst times. So Chef, we give our best wishes to you and your family. Want to continue to keep Chief Bill in our prayers. He's, he's had a little, he's been down for a little while. We're trying to make sure we get him repaired and get him back at it. So Chief, if you're listening, we miss you and hope you're doing well. Lori touched on the employees and Chief, you and your crew back there be safe. We know it's a busy time of the year for you guys. All our employees, all of our firemen, all of our policemen, we appreciate them tremendously and wish them a safe and happy holidays. So Chaplain Terry Fraser was going to do our prayer tonight and he had some surgery, from what I understand, scheduled, so he wasn't able to be here. We want to give him our best. You've probably heard the announcement about the Blue Angels. We're excited about that. The Blue Angels will be back in June of 19. You know, the Blue Angels are family to us and the Captain Coos Memorial will be mounted and opened by the time they return. We'll be doing that in the spring. And if you haven't seen the progress of what's going on over there across from the airport near the golf course over by the SOAC Center, that's what that is. All that work going on on the hill right there is preparing for the jet to be mounted. And my wish is to everybody for a great Christmas, a healthy Christmas, and a Merry Christmas. I think Raquel hit it best, remember the reason for the season, that's why we're all here. Thank you all for sitting through 10 public hearings tonight and about a dozen other things that we had to discuss.